This town will call the Tuesday, June July sixth. Well, I came in last week and they wished me Happy New Year. Everybody was wishing everybody Happy New Year. At this time, we'll call it July sixth, twenty twenty one, meeting to order. Sorry, David, Mike Stennis, myself, Jack Willie, supervisors. Lisa Smith, our county auditor, Bjorn, running the camera, and Lisa, or Luann, is that your name?
I think so.
Our administrative assistant. And at this time, we will open the public hearing on ordinance. Two ninety-three, ninety-eighth Street, restrictive parking. You had any calls or anything, David, on that?
No. I have not heard a thing.
I haven't, no one has contacted me about it either.
There's no comment, sir. I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay.
The only item on the agenda is the possible action on approving the ordinance for the parking restrictions, number two ninety-three. Presumably, you can do that in the second public hearing. Make a motion to go through.
I would second, that's current ordinance, number two ninety-three, is that correct?
Yes.
That's all I have.
I would second that. Put a motion in a second to approve the ordinance. Number two ninety-three, restricting parking on Ninety-Eighth Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And what about the second and third reading?
Are we waiving those?
We just said the second, right?
This is, this was the first.
This is the first. You did not vote last week.
We didn't take action on it.
Take any actions, so today is your first.
So, can we make another motion to waive the second and third readings?
Or can they add that to the previous motion?
I'm okay if you want to add it to the previous motion.
I would. Include that in my first motion.
And waive second and third.
And you're okay with the second? Yes, okay, second.
Okay.
That's handled.
We'll get it installed.
Okay. Julie, since you are here, why don't we go ahead because we don't have visitors and citizens till nine fifteen, so we can take care of you while you're, so you can get about your business.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, so I'm here about the Drug Free Communities Grant. Kimberly Grant Nettie has served as the project director for the last two and three quarters years. We started our fourth quarter on July first of our third grant year. So we have two years left in this last quarter. The grant requires that an employee of the grant recipient, which is Jackson County, be the project director. When we applied, it was actually Frank Freiber, which is how it ended up in public health. Frank was a member of the coalition and very involved in the writing of the grant. It kind of timed out that Frank left and Kimberly started when the grant started. So she was able to do the three weeks of training to be a DFC project director. Well, now that she's leaving, it kind of leaves us whole. We had some conversations, and a new environmental health person is probably not going to have any knowledge about substance abuse grants. Lynn Boggs, because she's been a member of the coalition, and mental health and substance abuse really do go hand in hand in many cases, has some knowledge and experience with the topic. Um, I did talk with her about, you know, what the grant is. She was aware of some of it, gave her the project director job description. I believe she spoke with Jack, Shelley Hoy, and Becky Chapin about the, you know, her role, what it means. So the grant pays ten percent of whoever the project director's time is. So it was Kimberly, if it became Lynn, Shelley would just bill ten percent of Lynn's total salary and benefit package to the grant. Lynn indicated to me she would be interested in assuming that role if the board was acceptable with that. To make that happen with the funder, I suppose it's a form, but it's online, so it's a bunch of boxes. You have to do a request, which will include Lynn's resume being sent to the CDC, who manages the grant, um, and be approved. It would be nice to do a clean from Kimberly to Lynn without a gap. Um, because then you have to do other paperwork explaining why you have a gap and nobody is in that role. So that is why I am here. Lynn is hosting a mental health first aid training today, which is why she's not sitting here with me. That would have been ideal. But that training was scheduled before Kimberly's, all this happened. So here I am, um, so if it would be acceptable to the board that Lynn could step into that role and be the project director for the DFC for the last two years, and then hopefully we'd apply for a second five years, is our intent, and that would be competitive again.
Okay.
Sounds like.
I talked to Lynn and Lynn said that she was okay with it, and she wondered if we would have any qualms about it, and I said, I doubt that we would.
I don't, I don't think, other than the fact that they would take away from what her duties are and what she's doing now, but I think it'd be a great fit. So my other question would be, with the extra duties, is there extra compensation due to her or just on her current salary? They're going to pay ten percent of her current salary, is that the case?
Something of her current salary and benefit package.
Okay, it just seems that she should be compensated for extra duties.
Well, she explained to me that it would be, they would take over ten percent of her salary and benefits, and she seemed fine with that.
I'm going to win-win for us. Um, I guess maybe I didn't catch it. Does she have the DFC designation, or does she need to do the three-week training?
The, the three-week training is offered when you get the grant. And so that was part of the struggle is whoever get it is not going to get a full three weeks. But like in February, we would travel to Washington DC for that annual training. Lynn would be able to go and then she would participate in some of those trainings. She already has knowledge because she's been in the coalition five or six years. I'd have to look exactly. So she really knows the action plan and what we do. Part she'd have to learn is the paperwork. And there are reporting requirements, um, which is why she talked to Shelley, and I do some of it, and Lynn would, the project director then approves it before submission, but I actually do the reports, and then somebody reviews them at the county. Is how that process goes. Shelley handles all the financial reporting and aspects. But again, Lynn, Kimberly is aware and sees those reports before they go in.
Yeah, it sounds like a great fit for me, as long as she don't get overwhelmed. That's my, that's my concern with her doing.
She seemed comfortable.
Okay.
When I talked to her, I mean, she wasn't, I mean, I said, well, what do you think? And she said, well, I think it'd be fine. And, you know, she wasn't hesitant.
Yeah, yeah, well.
You know, if it doesn't work, we can always review it. It's not like it'll be etched in stone, but I think it's a great fit. Um, I think Lynn and I have worked together in the past, and I think we can make this work, um, very well.
And so you're okay? I mean, you're prepared, we're prepared to take action today. We can do that.
Motion to approve. I, I would second the motion of Lynn, the junior project.
Director.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you also. Well, do you want to start?
I can. For this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one board proceedings, as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Don't move.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion needed to accept, place, unfile, and authorize, excuse me, motion need to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept, place, unfile, and authorize the county recorders report a feast collected for the month of June, twenty twenty-one in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-one cents, and for the period of July one, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of six hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and sixty cents.
And do we know how that? Add up to current prior year?
I haven't looked.
Looks like a good number.
Yeah, I didn't look to even see how close it came to what was budgeted.
And I would move to approve. Second, motion in a second to approve, um, the monthly and annual report. We're doing them together, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve the renewal of a special Class C liquor license, beer wine, with outdoor service and Sunday sales to Confish Hollow Barnstormers LLC at five oh one three, two hundred and eighty-eighth Avenue, Macau, effective July first, twenty twenty-one through January first, twenty twenty-two.
So move. Second. And move in a second to approve the special Class C liquor license for Pat the shallow barnstormers. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Luann?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
That's right. All right, calendar this week. Tomorrow morning at nine AM is an RTA meeting. Um, I think I have on here to view, but I think you can't go in person if you want, but I think there is a Zoom option available. Also, at six o'clock, um, tomorrow night is, um, an E nine one one service board meeting for Mike. Thursday, July eighth, at ten AM, Jack has an Iowa DHS council meeting by Zoom. And I have on there the local emergency planning committee meeting. That is not going to happen in July. The next meeting will be in August. You can cross that one off your list.
That is not happening, you said.
It is not happening. The fourth, correct.
I just put it in my calendar.
She didn't even give it up until this morning. Yes, exactly. Friday, July ninth, um, at nine fifteen AM, um, State Attorney Rob Stan will be having a town hall meeting at First Ward Park. For anyone who wants to go to that, or your lawn chair. Um, good. Everybody.
I'll let you finish her a couple things, right?
All right, everybody except Jack. Jack will be in Altoona for a twelve-thirty Workforce Clio Summit meeting. So. Go right ahead.
Um, so on Wednesday at six o'clock for the nine-one-one meeting, I had a conflict because there's also an ARP session. I would like to listen and maybe contribute to.
Okay.
Um. So I'm not worried about them having the meeting and doing their business, but what about the door?
Of letting people in?
Yeah, Lynn can get in the courthouse if he comes, but as far as having the meeting.
Who can get in? Lynn meeting her.
And we're having it downstairs, we're having it up here.
We usually have it here.
Okay. Well, if you can't let people in, you need me to come down and make sure I can first, yeah. Come down and let people in for that meeting?
Oh, yeah, you unlock the door unless you.
I can leave the door.
Well, leave the door open. I don't have a problem with that.
The building is locked.
I mean, you got Brad and Bob both.
You set the time.
Set the time to have it unlocked and then locked. As long as I have twenty-four hours notice.
You mean the outside door? Oh, that's interesting.
Just need twenty-four hours notice though, Joe.
Yeah, we'll program it. You got it. So it's on you.
Tell me when you want to unlock and when you want to lock.
Um, so it says six.
Yes.
Five, five, twenty, yeah, forty, yeah, something like that, or thirty-nine. And then, I think, I looked at the agenda, but I don't know.
I would, I mean, anybody can get out, so it's just. Six, so.
So what about the, what about the button there? You can time it, it will bypass that. So the outside door.
Kind of like during the day, how it unlocks at eight-thirty.
Okay.
I just have to change the program here.
Well, I will talk to you about that.
Yeah, give the twenty-four hours notice to download the program.
I would say by seven-thirty, I, usually, or.
Well, I really don't, they should be coming even.
I would say from six forty-five or five forty-five to six fifteen, six twenty.
That's what I do sometimes.
To lock that, but then they can just get out, yeah.
Yeah, they don't have to.
Yeah, that would be just fine, yeah. Because otherwise Brad has your number two, Brad and.
Correct it?
He may, he can, I'm sure.
Yeah, that'll work.
We can set that up.
So, yeah, I don't. I'll just call one of either Bob or Brad and help run the meeting or something for that.
So are you planning to go in that, to that meeting in Bellevue Wednesday night?
I was just going to bring that up. We have it down for Friday morning and for Wednesday night?
No.
Or is it two different things?
Wednesday night is not Rob Sands.
Wednesday night is something.
That's the. Put together with.
Greater New York Board of Foundation and.
Okay. Macau Foundation and.
Yeah.
It's at the brewery.
Yeah, so it starts at five-thirty.
I'm thirty-seven.
I, I am.
I'll, I think I'll try to make that.
Well, I'm planning to try to get there too.
And that may be, I, I believe that I read somewhere that that's going to be taped, so.
I hope so.
It's Zoom, so it will be taped, yes.
You can go by Zoom if you prefer.
And I will not be at the Friday. I have a conflict that will date.
Are you planning to go to that, Lisa? Because I know.
Yeah, I know you can't, so, no, I was planning, it's in my calendar.
Yeah, I think I'm sending my wife to see what she is.
I'm going to send her to Jackson County.
I have something to say.
Yeah, she always. Especially if she talks to you. She always has plenty to say.
Home conversations. They're long.
Okay.
All right. Um. Onto Monday, then July twelfth, seven-thirty, I don't know for sure.
There is nothing in on, in July.
For early traffic.
Either, either meeting will not be held.
Okay, so.
We're going to meet the second, um, second Monday in August.
Okay. And Peggy will be taking over.
Peggy's.
She's in charge now, okay. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, July thirteenth. It will be a very busy day. Um, at two o'clock that afternoon, there will be a Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO meeting in Muscatine for Jack. And at four o'clock, we have a Cook and River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting for Larry. Um, at six o'clock that night is the Jackson County Conference Board meeting. That will be a Zoom meeting, and that should be, they're telling me, very short meeting, ten, fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
At that meeting, I think only one order of business for that. And at seven o'clock that night is your work session with the Jackson County Board of Health. And she has not sent me the details yet as to where this is going to be, and I'm guessing it'll be at seven o'clock because that's when my meetings usually are.
And where are they at?
That's what she hasn't told me yet. They usually have been meeting at the hospital, but the last time they met at the ME church, so. Waiting for her to tell me where we're meeting.
She meant, they meant where?
At the, the ME church. Up the street.
ME church.
Methodist Episcopal.
Oh. Oh, Methodist Episcopal?
I think that's what it is. I only know it is the ME church.
Never heard of it.
You go to the street and turn, right?
Is it in their social building?
Yeah, they got a basement, they have dinners and stuff.
Well, this is the one that, the building next to it.
Yeah.
They built that new hall.
Yes.
Next to that one.
I've never known it as the Methodist Episcopal. I've just known it as the Episcopal Church.
In Saint Marks or something. Is that the official name of it? Yes.
Okay. Live and learn.
There you go, so, but I don't know where this meeting is going to be because she hasn't said for sure, so I will get back to you on that one. That's it.
The conference board meeting is a Zoom.
It is. Yes. That's, and it said be very short. That's, I think, one reason why they did this is Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
And if they, you know, otherwise you're going to have to scramble to get out of here for the meeting with the Board of Health. I think.
I think it's just reappointing the assessor is all it is.
Right now.
I wouldn't, since we, since we have one and we're probably going to keep that assessor, I guess it's going to be pretty fast.
And we did receive notification that he completed the education that he had to have to stay in that position, so. And he even completed it early, so, anyway, she's there, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Um, oh.
You ain't finished, are you?
Oh, I am not. It's a long weekend. Okay, all right. Uh, we do have a couple of appointments on the agenda this morning for Historic Preservation Commission, which is good because they've had these vacancies for a while. Uh, the first appointment is for Laura Carstens for a two-year appointment. Um, it expires until thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And the second one is for Jacob Olert for the remainder of this year. Um, expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, and they're both to fill vacancies. I'm looking for those appointments.
And I thought they both had really good credentials.
They certainly do, I hear you. I'm really happy with what I'm seeing here.
Yes.
And we have one on the beach for gender balance, and that helps.
That point is totally gender balanced now, six and six.
I would move to approve them two appointments.
I would second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Laura Carstensen and Jacob Olert. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I am also looking for a change to a date on a fireworks permit. For Tommy Yearwood, he was one of the first ones that got a permit, and then it rained that day. So he would like to change the date of the fireworks show to July seventeenth with a rain date of the twenty-fourth.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second with, if we allow him a permit and it rains every time, the, we need to give him a friend every week.
Yeah. An automatic. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve Tommy Yearwood's change of date for his fireworks permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Right. Thank you, thank you for catching me before I look at that, taking care of business. Anything else I need to do? Obviously, I'm not all here today, so.
We would like to accept Ross River and Ken Wright.
Those were the two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission. Ken Wright has been not attending meetings for a while. He resigned a friendly while back, and I didn't know, but Ross River, we just.
Sure.
Lost in February, so.
After ten years of service. Ken Wright, was there five years, so?
Yeah.
Both of those are.
Yeah, I got it in here. Somewhere, I know where I am last night.
There are, if you want to read them, acknowledge them.
There it is. County Board of Supervisors honors Ross River, who passed away on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, after ten years of service on the Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission. The other one is Jackson County Board of Supervisors, except with regret, resignation of Ken Wright from the Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission after five years of service. So, you were both active members of that commission, and we'll miss them. Okay, um, next item, listen for a while, so at this time, we'll recess our meeting, and our next one is this time we'll reconvene the meeting, and we're being joined by Steve Tebby and Tom Devine from the Jackson County Area Tourism Association. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, gentlemen. Questions?
Questions?
Decisions, okay.
We don't need questions, we just need answers.
Okay. We've got that. Well, um, the, uh, the numbers for the Welcome Center are right in line with what we would hope they would be on a normal, uh, normal year. We aren't comparing them, of course, to last year because we weren't open, number one, and even if we were, COVID would have, would have changed a lot of that. Um, May of nineteen, our visitor numbers were ninety-six. This year, they were sixty-six. June of nineteen, our numbers were eighty-two. This year, they were sixty-eight. Uh, and July, they were a hundred and twenty-nine and two, two days, which is just, uh, the first four days in the month, we're at twenty-nine already. Um, and then in August of nineteen was ninety-five, so we'll have that to compare to. What, uh, what we're finding, and I've, I've done some checking with the, uh, Herschel Interpretive Center as well. They're showing their numbers are as good, if not better, than two thousand and nineteen. Uh, in our board meeting, uh, in the month of June, um, both the, uh, both the chambers in Bellevue and Macau had expressed that their numbers are, well, Macau has been closed for construction for quite a bit, but at that point, their numbers were up from what they've been. We don't, we don't know if, uh, some of the things we were talking about, you jump in here, because I don't want to completely railroad this, but, uh, what we're noticing is, especially in Bellevue with the new resort going in there, there's a lot of people coming into town here saying, yesterday, you're behind with somebody from New Jersey.
Yeah.
Or something, so.
Had a little road rage. I was just like, who in the heck is this? But anyway, and then actually, um, you know, what we're doing, you know, jump the gun here or whatever, but, you know, we're doing some things with the Grandwood Scenic Byway with that passport thing, you know, and actually, Wistrom Meadows is part of that. It's one of the, one of those, and I've seen different vehicles coming, sitting up there on top of the hill, you know, right there, and come on in. And then they're on their cell phone, wherever, so, and the last one that was there yesterday, I think they're from Hardin County or something. So it's like, I was talking to Tom a little bit about this. I went over there to his place, picked him up. And then we were talking about this on the way here, and it's just like, I don't think it's like one certain thing that's kind of causing Jackson County to kind of explode, if you would. I think it's like about four or five different things, you know. Um, one thing that, that we had done, you know, is that, you know, Larry, I know you had mentioned here a while back, I was in here on another issue, we talked about billboard, you know. So we did a couple of those things, and I tell you what, I think that, I think that really kicked her in the, and I think that's one of the reasons why these numbers are probably.
If you saw to, uh, I know, last, actually, yeah, yesterday evening, I was talking to a gentleman, and he helped work the rodeos. And it's not just that, it's just public events in general.
Yeah.
He said, it's not Jackson County either, you know, they're going to Wisconsin, they're going to Missouri, they're just wrecking crowds, and the public just want to get out. That's, and that's the key, Mike, is they do want to get out, and what we're finding is they don't want to go to the big cities where there's a hundred thousand people, those big events. They want to come to Jackson County and go to the caves and get turned away because they've got so many people.
And they said, like, for motorhomes and campers and RVs and stuff, you just can't find them. I mean, they're, yeah, everybody's looking for next town.
Well, Scott, uh, Scott does, uh, counts out there at his, at the caves, and his, he's running between seventy and eighty percent occupancy on his campgrounds. That's for the whole week. That's not just a weekend, that's for the whole week. They're staying, and they want to get away, and they want to stay. So that's, that's what we're seeing. Um, we're, we also, I think, I sent you a picture of that billboard that we have down in Moline. Did y'all see that? And then, um, we also, and I didn't explain it very well in my email to you, but we also took, since we didn't have the Welcome Center open, we had money budgeted for staff, we took five thousand dollars and we did a digital marketing campaign where someone was at, and we, we, we can, we could pinpoint someone that has, uh, uh, you can probably explain better than I can, but somebody that has a, a phone, and they are a female in a certain age group, and then we opened it up a couple months ago, they're males. Like, if they were looking, uh, in Cabela's, if they were looking for a canoe or something like that, and they got it on their phone, Jackson County would pop, pop, pop up and a, a link to our website that would show them, we've got the Cooper River Rennels, we have the Mississippi River, we got the Cooper River, all of that, and, and we have, uh, we're running that through the end of, uh, end of November, and we're supposed to have, uh, projected about half a million hits on that.
So Kevin, this last weekend had over seven hundred people come to there.
Yeah.
He's, he's going crazy.
Amazing how.
That was at the caves, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And they did get. Right here in Poggin goes down.
Down by the ballpark.
Bridgeport. Okay, they did get in there and take that steep slope out and made it a little bit.
So you're talking about getting on where?
Right downtown.
Well, some of the people are getting out. Well, some of the people are getting out on Lakers. That's where our kids got on.
And they go to Bridgeport. Well, they'll even go past Bridgeport, they'll go down to cross from Whispering Meadows. They'll, they'll pick them up out of.
Down press, they're probably down at the. I guess you can pick. The Iron Bridge.
Yeah.
And then they would end up down Sprague though.
Yeah.
They take that whole river. And there's a bunch of information on our county website as to where you can put in and you know, the times and just a ton of information on, and even videos to show you.
Yeah.
Where they're at.
And I can then come down to um, Joyerville.
Yeah, conservation running a thing from Ken to um oh, down for uh, early looking for an- animals in the water and stuff, you know, just for.
Yeah.
And you know, it's just kind of unique, kind of odd, but you always kind of know when things are kind of rocking a little bit, when the city councils are coming, people going to city council saying that. I tell you what, everybody's parking in our parking spots in front of our businesses now. Now that's a problem. That's, that's been going on too, so. That's. It's something I didn't realize, there's fifty miles of McCoke River in Jackson County.
Wow, really?
With the. Yeah, yeah.
And we just got, uh, we had a uh, Grand Wood Scenic Byway and, and what he was, was he was referring to is that, I don't know if you all know it, but they have uh, the, the state of Iowa State Tourism had a program last year where because of the hundred year of the state parks, they developed this passport program where you could go in and when you got to that state park, you could check in.
Right.
That was so successful, they got an award for it. So this year they've gone to the wineries, they've gone to the breweries and the Grant, and the scenic byways, which June was Grand Wood Scenic Byway Month. So if you go to the, uh, I mean, you can download this passport actually. And if you go to it, it'll show you all of the uh, places you could stop, there are twenty places along there, including McCoke River Rental and um, Bellevue, all, all three state parks. Uh, of course, because it's Jones County too, it goes to watch Spinnigan. Uh, Clemence Museum, the Hurstville Interpretive Center, Iowa Grapevine, Jackson County Speedway, uh, Jack County Museum, and the people that went to these places and like C said, or they were check in, you can just go and, and click this button and the GPS denotes that you were there. And that registers you, that puts you as one entry in for a prize uh, prize package and the package for uh, month of June uh, is a stay at either Squire's Manor or Decker, uh, twenty-five dollars from Calmas, thirty dollars from the caves suspended there. Um, uh, concession stand, a hundred dollars from Jackson County Tourism, another thirty, you know, there is like three hundred, four hundred dollars worth of things that whoever wins that's going to get, that'll be drawn on the tenth of July and, and awarded at that time, so a lot, I'm anxious to get from them because they can actually pull those numbers of how many people are coming. I'm anxious to see what numbers those people are, are receiving, how they check in. I had one say, oh, they're coming in uh, and they're just checking in and they're not buying anything. Okay. They know where you are now. You know? They'll be back, they may be, they may not, but what does it hurt? It actually costs. Yeah, yeah, in the area, you're right. And it costs them absolutely nothing to be on that passport program.
So, uh, news article, K M Q, Ben on there saying some of this or?
Uh, we had on, in May, May is tourism month, we did a big promotion of radio ads talking about what we do in Jackson County and the tourism industry, yeah.
You know, and, and that tourism thing, if it was in our own county, within ourselves, it is hard to figure out because Whispering Meadows, we've been there now twenty-one, twenty-two years. And I will see somebody in McCoke or wherever, someplace in the park or something, and I'll say Whispering Meadows. Where's that at? Are you serious? It's just like, you know, so it's really strange how that is sometimes. Well, even with uh, and that's been there for ten, twelve years, messing with people say, well, where's that? I'm just like, wow, there's thousands and thousands of people go there every, you know.
Well, we had that with the jail.
Yeah. Why don't you put it here because we've never, yeah. Well, I never had to visit that place yet.
My God, you know, so.
So I, I guess to sum up, I guess the, the jury's still out, it's how, how successful it is, but the trend is that it's still, still viable and still working, working well.
That out, I mean, when I had my business, I'd pass out different things for our playground equipment and okay, you go to a show and normally sell one or two sets, something like that, but now, and all those years later, somebody pull one out of a drawer and says, yeah, we saw you a couple of years ago and we're just waiting for a diamond here or there, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's out there and it, it worked, it really did. You know, we've had this discussion a little bit about Welcome Center, you know, and stuff, you know, that kind of thing, you know, we talked a little bit about that. And I'll be honest with you, um, obviously probably two years ago, my thought process of that whole thing is different than what it is today. And I think it's because of the numbers and things like that, I talked to several people that are actually part of our Jackson County ATV, or not ATV club, I'm sorry, but the Jackson County Tourism. And we kept talking about the people that actually do stop at someplace like that, you know? My, my daughter is, one is twenty-five and the other one is thirty-seven. I asked them, do you guys go to Welcome Centers and do that kind of thing? No, we just do it online. But at the same token, the ones that are forty-two on up to sixty, the ones that are, ones that really have the time, actually the travel and things like that, are doing that. And so, you know, the thing, the funny thing about this is, is that the ones that are like my daughter, and my daughters right now, they are going to turn into forty-two and forty-five years old and then they will be in that category, or toward it going to be halfway retired, stuff like that. So I don't know.
Well, the brochures, uh, that's another thing I forgot to mention is the indication from the chambers and any place that has the brochures like Hurstville Interpretive Center, brochures are flying off the rack. We had, two years ago, we said, uh, they're obsolete, everybody's using these. Well, now the chamber director is telling us they're picking up brochures again, so.
Yeah, they really, they're really hunkered us down, yeah.
So do we have a booth at the fair? Tourism, you bet, yeah, we'll be there every day, we, we give uh, do a prize drawing for a basket with an overnight stay and places to stop, you know, we do that.
Really, actually, you know, any of you guys or whatever, anybody is actually invited to be part of, you know, just to be there at that booth if you choose for an hour or two, whatever the case, it's just kind of, it'd be kind of a neat little deal for people to see the supervisors, it'd be kind of nice.
Yeah.
Do that. Be kind of nice, you know, just pop in there.
Go ahead, you stopped in on the.
We just tell them, we gotta go to work, is that what you want to tell them? I'll meet up with you later. Anyway, uh, but that's, that's kind of my theory on this thing too, so I don't know, like, and um, you know, there is, I, I had a question one time, um, somebody had called me actually from, from our tourism. They said that things weren't being taken care of down there, whatever. And I thought, gee whiz, this is like about maybe three weeks ago, a month ago or whatever. So I took off, I've been, instead of going to work, I took off and I go down there. From Bellevue, you know? As soon as what was going on and luckily I got down there then when my girl was just down there starting, was starting to work there, whatever. And I'm telling you what, everything looked mowed up and all that kind of thing, it really, really did look nice, I took a couple pictures of it actually. And so I did that and then the girl was actually the lady, lady that works there, she's from Sprague, she was changing the sign, doing some stuff on that. And so I asked her, I says, you know, like the mowing and things like that, well, this, this is get done. She said, I hear you once a week doing that, so I thought.
Yeah, we made arrangements to the conservation board to do that.
Yeah. But that's, um, at least they're doing it, you know, that was my concern.
Well, it wasn't being done, so that's why we talked to them.
That's good, you guys did, yeah.
Because, well, I, last year I was.
Yeah.
I was appalled.
Yeah.
At how it looked.
Yeah, and naturally, of course, last year was COVID and I'm also.
But it's still, you know.
I know, I know.
It's still part of Jackson County and we wanted it to look nice and it was one time I went by and it was awful and next time I went by, it's unfortunate they hadn't bailed what they cut because it looked worse cut than it did when it was weeds.
And, and the, the thing about that whole thing is, it's no different than Tom or myself can go ahead and suggest and, and tell them, you know, it's just like, you know, you guys be there more often, it's just like, yeah, okay. And then it won't happen until when you guys talk to us, just like, get that done.
Well, it was still as far as the situation, we had a new conservation director also, so then he got a little behind it and they all got a little behind it. And they learned the ropes and hopefully we got that.
Yeah.
And maybe that's all it took was a little nudge.
You know, I, we appreciate that, really honestly, that was. But if everybody works together, of course. Yeah, exactly, but you know, we're no different than our jobs, we're not doing the same thing. Any more questions or anything, any issue, any?
Well, it'd be interesting in the end of the year for report, yeah, I mean, you know, we certainly have to talk about it again.
Yeah, talk to Tom, you're um, you know, about this, you know, about coming in here and giving a report or whatever. We should really do this, like maybe, I don't know, I think like maybe every, every month is six weeks. It'd be kind of nice to come on in, don't you think, Tom?
Yeah, so. Where are you guys?
Yeah.
I think the public needs to know.
We do.
How their money is being spent. And if it is successful or not.
Are you just coming in randomly now or is it quarterly?
Just random, random, yeah.
Well, we should at least do quarter, that's every three months.
Every three months, yeah.
So if you want to come in randomly, you've got something on your mind, yeah.
You want to be more up in the spring or the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
This would be more like, if this really works nice right now, just because we have some numbers to share.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we would have came back in, you know, March or whatever.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah. You know, it's just kind of where.
Yeah, the whole, the whole world's a plus right now with, you know, coming back online and trying to figure out and now they're talking about shutting down again because it's taken off, but.
So I heard, I heard on news today that St. Louis is actually going to institute their uh, mask mandate again, so. And I guess, I don't know, people are coming down with varying whatever because they, they don't know who's, who's vaccine, I thought, well.
It's a, a whole new world.
It is, it is, yes.
Not going back to the way it was.
And it gets scarier every day.
Yeah. It's a little bit, you know, but you just kind of move on and get realigned and.
I mean, it'll work itself out.
It will, it does, yeah. It was out there, yeah, it's true, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks guys for uh.
Keep us updated and.
Yeah.
Emails are good.
We do. Thanks for your support.
I think Jeanne sounds here, I don't know. Morning.
Good morning.
I mean, everybody wants to talk about weeds.
At this time, we're joined by Jeanne Collins Hire, uh, Jackson County Weed Commissioner for a department update.
Okay, um, I've had a few uh, complaints that there was, this complaint and there was some poison hemlock complaint and the poison hemlock was county right away and uh, county property, so I took care of that myself and um, we're working on um, Luanne and I are working on some forms. We don't really have anything current to send to people, so I'm kind of working with her on that.
As far as.
As a complete form?
As a complaint form to send them to the landowners. Um, there really hasn't been anything current, so I'm hoping to maybe call another county and speak with the weed commi- commissioner there and see how the whole process works for them, or maybe be a little more knowledgeable about how.
Well, I think, yeah, we certainly need a paper trail of some kind.
Yeah.
And then we'll also need to know, I, I mean, they need to know that they need to comply, you know?
Yeah.
And we have a news, the weed ordinance, but it goes into paper once a year. They're supposed to be cut and.
Yeah. And yeah, as far as, she didn't actually have a blank form as far as the paperwork to send to people, so that's kind of where we're at now, working on that. I did place a phone call to a landowner about the weed problem that was reported to me and he did take care of it, so. But as far as getting people served, we need to, yeah, work on that.
I, I actually thought we could have a complaint form for nonchalant weeds.
Yeah, been years since we've used it, so I'm working on something different.
That's what Jeanne said.
What's that, some poison mustard, yellow?
Um, wild parsnip?
Wild parsnip, there you go.
Yeah.
I see that a lot.
And it's in our county, which is. A lot of work to try to control that, it's kind of speckled everywhere throughout the county, so. Um, I've done some roadside work, um, worked on some thistles on Valley Cascade and I've been working on a lot of teeth. Um, long the Miles Highway, um, up in the Cottonville area, I've been working on that. And as far as the brush, I'm figuring a lot of the chainsaw work can be done in the fall, once the plants, you know. Yeah. And work on that, those things, so.
Well, it's good to hear that some of this roadside stuff is being done, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, it's a, it's a huge challenge.
Oh, it is, I mean, yeah.
And if you're eight hundred miles of road and there are ditches on both sides, it's uh.
It, you don't really realize how much is out there to start looking for it. I noticed that.
But I mean, you'll see a lot more people complaining to the, to the nonchalant weeds or the, even the brush, a lot of people mowing their ditches anymore.
There really is.
Yeah. For the wildlife or the birds or the bees or the butterflies, but.
At least we waited till after nesting season.
Yeah.
I went after my ditch too and I had a little. All sorts of stuff, because I was itching and scratching and. It's like, okay, that's poison, I mean, I mean, it's just all sorts of stuff, but.
When I was driving back from Sioux City, they were doing the entire roadside ditch, they hadn't figured out, they had a truck and they had the boom out and they figured out how far that could spray. And then they had two four-wheelers ahead of that, that could take the next spots, I mean, it's very wide, it was, it was pretty amazing to watch it work, actually. Johnson County has a spray truck, it's.
I think Clinton had a pretty good spraying program too, because you travel a lot of them roadside ditches down there.
Yeah.
Oh, you see roads, yeah, Wheatland and Calmas and down that way, they, there ain't many weeds.
So as a county, they sprayed all of their road ditches every year?
Can't say that, I asked.
You know, they probably don't have to every year, but once you, I mean.
Once you get it. Once you get the grass established and the weeds gone, then the grass will take over, you know, and then they won't, then the weeds won't come back here. I know that it's, it's quite a difference when you go down through there, we had site by sites down through that bar and uh, to just, I would notice it now just because, sure, I talk about weeds, but yeah, you know, I think it. And I, we asked Todd about it and wasn't really sure. Might be good to talk to them too a little bit down there, see what they're doing.
I knew they had a roadside person, I wasn't familiar, but they still have that position, but.
I think they do, they have a special spraying program that they, I don't know if they hire that out.
It looks effective.
Yeah, and so probably need to look at that and figure out the budget for next year and I mean, or see where we're going.
Some of the weeds, I'm a little lary on it on um, our lawn bean ground, maybe I wait till corn rotation to do some of that, I have to.
Concern is like, we've talked about it before, the beans are corn and Grandma's roses, you know, I mean.
Great find. This is just drafts that I have, okay? We had, I found one for us, I found one from Benton County that I plagiarized, and the other one's just a log to kind of checklist for each complaint. But it's that we haven't, I can't say that we've used it for seven years, so I don't know even if the code sections are up to date, I haven't even checked that, so. I think you can work on that.
I think the letter you found was O one.
Yeah, that was the last, yeah.
That's the case, you wouldn't think we had a problem.
Well.
Twenty years ago.
Checked our septic system after. But uh, let me take care of it.
Yeah, open ground gives it, sure gives them a chance to get going.
Okay, anything else? Okay, anything else?
Uh, was Nathan coming or no, you know?
He was, it was at ten twenty, those.
He might have run in.
We're just a little ahead of our schedule.
I don't know if he had anything else to add or. Hey, you know, again, I said, I appreciate you updating us with the program, how it's going and where you're working at.
Knowing that it's been done.
I had one day, one of the staff members helped me, but it's, yeah, they've been busy with other things, so.
Yeah.
Men just be so, it's kind of a slow process. Some of the places, it'll be a few years getting it under control. We actually get grass established.
Sure. Yeah, you know, I've been trying to grow wildflowers on the backside of one of my outside that's really steep. It's process.
So last year, across the road from where I live, on the Prairie Creek. Went in there and sprayed all this area out and my neighbor started complaining, so what are you doing killing all that stuff? And they showed up at one of our meetings at Prairie Creek, I said, well, we're planting wildflowers in there. And you should see it now, it, that whole hillside is just bright yellow, it's really beautiful.
I'd like to figure out how you did that, I, I'd like that.
Anything to tell us?
I killed all mine once too, you know, and they said, well, you gotta go in there and just kill it. I said, well, then I went and got to over Naylor Seeds or wherever, well, they got a bunch of seed different packages and I got some from.
I just wanted to drive out there, just head up that road, you'll see it on the right hand side, that's just a blank. Right next to where, um, the houses on that side.
Do you want it quite a bit then to keep the competition down before it really got to behind?
This year at all, it's, it's not the first planting that was done a couple of years ago, this is new one from last year.
Planning to do that area beside the Flinten Engine Museum and prairie flowers and prairie grass. You know, that, um. And seeds donated, um, from some company and they want to get that established.
Takes a few years, the first two years.
And I think that's about five acres.
That's what surprised me about this, to come back quick and have that much color there.
Through your process, but.
Keep the competition mode on just for a couple of years and then you start to see some.
Now Phil Jant is gonna, he's in charge.
I was just saying Nathan go down that way.
He looked this way, but.
Maybe he's running away from.
Yeah, I don't know.
Maybe he had to take something, think auditor's office. Probably wants to come in and tell us he found land to build this machine channel.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, it would be. Well, I don't have anything else, Jeanne, anybody else?
Glad to hear it.
Maybe Nathan will come in and.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I know, just check out some of the other counties. We need to go, that sounds like we need to probably go that route.
So we do have our new sprayer, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's working good?
Um, have not actually used it yet. Okay, I've been doing a lot of backpack spots spraying.
Yeah, yeah.
So a lot of bean ground and I'm sorry about.
I can't remember the size, that was at thirty, thirty?
Sixty.
Sixty, yeah, that'd be a nice size. Sixteen. Really? Same amounts on side by side or something, or you?
Um, it'll fit in the box of a side by side or, or pickup, you actually load it with the skid loader. Forks.
And is, is there, there's not a seat, of course, but you just, you could just stand and use a wand or?
Um, yeah, it has just a lot, like a hundred key hose, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds pretty.
And a boom can come with it down the road, you know, that's, you know, we need to look at, but.
There was one, we had a meeting in Manchester and for the watershed thing and this guy had a drone. And with the blades on, and I think it's about eight foot square. But you could put a fair amount of spray in that, he did custom spraying, I mean, if you had thistles out in the middle of them. You'll wherever, you could just fly out there and spray it and come back. Pretty impressive, the blades are, oh, probably two foot diameters and there's like eight of them on there.
How are you guys?
Good.
We're good, how are you?
Good.
Well, we know all about the weeds now, so.
Jeanne already gave an update?
Yeah. Oh, man, were you in here when I walked by?
Yeah.
I guess I was blind. So, well, then, figured I'd give you guys a environmental head update too. This, this is the latest I have printed off, but just so you guys can see some of the numbers, I think Claire's probably seen it. But can guide go by month, April, I should have printed one month first. You too, um, April, they did a hundred and thirty seven programs, had a thousand one hundred and thirty three participants. For total two hundred and forty nine hours of staff time. And then in May, they conducted a hundred and sixty two programs for a thousand two hundred and fifty eight participants for two hundred hours of staff time. Um, some of you guys know the school while they did the four school districts in the county. Had over two, doesn't stay up. Um, some of that's just general things, but, um, I thought I'd give you an update so you can see what they've been up to. Um, they've been touching base with quite a few people this spring and staying busy at the center, so.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know if, if you guys had seen this or not, so I thought I'd bring it in, so you kind of knew. Um, this is just an environmental ed, update, you can have that one.
So, no, I think more of the, more people want to get out and like, we talked with tourism group or in smaller communities. And then to off to the outdoors and taking some of the things that I have, I wish.
So I hope you submit this to the Sentinel Press.
I, it would go in with our board minutes usually.
I would do a special article on it.
Okay.
I really think.
Well, I'll talk to Kelly too, she just.
She's on the air.
Yeah.
Right, Kelly.
Was texting back and forth with her before I came in here, so. Um, maybe get some pictures though. Yeah, yeah, I think they would have some pictures probably with the staff, but that was, it was a busy spring going from COVID where they. They were trying to do stuff, but they weren't getting to every school in Eastern Ohio wanted to come visit. So, and the staff is working with like the McCopey case, because they're not, they don't have naturalists anymore, so. They can get a program and go out there, they'll do that too. Um, they're staying busy at the center, busier than Pam would like sometimes. So, um, but I thought I'd give that update, but I don't know what Jeanne kind of filled you guys in on.
Mostly just the weeds.
The weed stuff.
The program.
Yeah, as you drive every ditch, you find some kind of basin, now you're really careful.
The more you find.
Yeah, kind of, I never even paid attention that much until she started doing it, I'm like, oh no, it's everywhere, so.
Yeah, I'm kind of getting that eye for two, I'm like, oh no.
Yeah, so it'll take some time.
Yeah.
Figure it out and at least we got to start on it. And I think as we get more time through the summer, hopefully a staff member or two can hop in and help Jeanne. Um, I know Jerry's helped a few days, I don't think. Yeah, so, not just for doing it, hopefully we get some. Thing with spraying chemicals, he had the right wind and not rain and just not always viable. Today it'd be all right, probably, a lot of hotter and tenderly. So, um, uh, campgrounds were full for screws, Jeanne probably could fill in more on that. She worked patrol during the day on Friday instead of every day, Sunday.
Hello, good week, we're full Tuesday morning late.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
All eighty five sites are open.
Yep, every site's open, um, there's, yeah, we're full Tuesday there. It was, uh, it's kind of weird feeling, uh, go Thursday, but it was just kind of people moving in and out there, so.
I was really surprised, I was by the. Porchupan camp area and there weren't very many campers there at all.
There weren't.
Maybe six or seven.
That hasn't been very busy this summer there for some reason, I don't know, it's because the caves got opened or what.
Could be.
Um, but we were full both campgrounds, so I just dropped off money bags and. And they haven't counted it out, but there's probably twelve, thirteen thousand dollars there just from the week, so. Um, that's a good sign, wasn't any real problems that we solved, it was pretty quiet.
Didn't have.
That's what we wanted, it seems like we didn't have a best good group solve summer early, so. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, don't know if you guys had questions for us, it hasn't been too long since I gave you an update and I don't know. There hasn't been too much new.
I asked Jeanne if you bought your land for your shed and she said no.
Yeah, maybe I should just put Jeanne in charge of planning that. Yeah, um, one thing new, I guess, we didn't budget it, and we may have to just pull. Jerry was scooping off the ridge for to access with our skid loader. The river was lower, we decided we could do it with our machines instead of hiring it out. Track broken half right in the middle of the, the ramp on Thursday or Friday. When I, doesn't matter what day, last week, one day, um, so that'll be. We had to get a tow truck to tow it to the top and then Raiders come pick it up, so didn't have a track on it. So that'll be a fairly expensive fix that we'll be seeing, I don't know what to expect.
That was out there, that sure made a big difference.
Is it, I, I know he tried to get back to the tractor to try to clean it up a little more, but I don't know if he got. Tractor's not as capable as a skid or.
It went from going like this to more like that, where you could actually walk it, it was hard to walk before.
Yeah.
Because you step on a rock and it'd roll under you, it was that steep.
So hopefully the, we don't get any flooding and that stays like that for a while, you know, as soon as that starts cutting again. But we got permits for that finally and.
Um, you could use a little rock on the bottom, it was kind of muddy there.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm sure it was after he did all that work. Brian Little, so, um, that one, and I, he talked to like, um, Kevin Goomins worker. And they said they had seven hundred people going through it this weekend, so it was, it's probably a good timing now, we actually got some work done to it.
Yeah.
Um, finally got that permit back, he cleaned up. Iron Bridge Access, Damon Bridge before they had the track problems, so.
Royer Town.
Royer Town, we did Royer Town before the venture race last week, so that one got, so our accesses are starting to look better.
So with the, um, bridge we're taking out, where's that one at?
Are you talking Ozark Bridge, you know, the cabin bridge?
Cabin Bridge.
Cabin Bridge, yeah.
Do we have plans for both that, after that bridge comes out or what?
We kind of have an access, it's in the planning with the water trails to do something there. We kind of have a parking lot and a access spot on that. Um, the one we'd need is upstream or downstream to make sense, because it's a long paddle to Davis and Bridge from there. Something that's in the plans, we may want to work with, uh, somebody, see if we can acquire a little lot or something to put another access. One direction or another, because I don't know too many people want to paddle ten hours to get to the next access down or wherever.
I guess, and they're taking out there mostly, but.
Yeah, I, there is, it's getting used, Ryan, who works seasonal back for us now, um, said that there was a bunch of people parked. On the wrong side of the bridge this weekend and they must carry news across the whole bridge. I don't know when you guys are removing, I haven't heard anything about the bridge or anything about it, but if people are still going across it.
And we wanted to make one on this side of it, so, or maybe you have one on both sides, will anybody come in from the other side?
Don't know if we'd have room on the south side and that neighbor might not.
That neighbor is going to be completely gone.
Yeah.
So the road becomes, I mean, what's. Yeah, right where the bridge is, it could be the access point.
Yeah, that neighbor has called me several times, I tried to have him talk to second year. He wants us to apply for REAP grants to make it a walking bridge. I don't think it makes sense to use our REAP money for that, for people, um, and I don't think there's any other money. And it sounds like the bridge isn't disrepair, that's what I heard, I don't know.
Fracture critical, which.
Isn't it a hundred and twenty two years old?
Yeah. Okay, what that means at any point, if something breaks on it, the whole bridge goes down. So it cannot be used for a walk trail. I mean, you could take it out and put a new one in, but we know what that costs.
Yeah, it would be. Yeah.
With the old one and it's not feasible for a new one.
Yeah, I hope he has. I said that, that's, I haven't been in the conversations, I've said, but us as conservation, I don't think we're interested in putting a bridge there for. Any reason. We, we have plenty other projects, we'd rather spend that money or go for REAP grants on. And REAP grants are really competitive as it is, so I don't think it would score very well. Um, so I don't know what his thoughts are would be on a new access, but I think people get trained to drag around and come down from. Um, for an.
Not that far around.
No, they'll figure it out, they'll learn that it's closed on the one side and once we get that bridge removed, they'll figure, oh, there's a wedding. I'm not too concerned, it's more figuring out if we can get another access somewhere close. I think they put in, maybe into Jones County and come to that. Um, somewhere, come into that access and take out there, I'm not sure, I guess, I don't know how.
Well, they used to, I know that a lot of people, um, go in at the Supple Bridge and then come down to Canton and then down.
I don't know where that one, I'm not familiar.
It's in Jones County.
Is it, okay, yeah, so. That sounds like it's fairly busy even there. Um, but our priorities, we did get a grant from the DNR, it was like. I don't want to say a number, it was over sixty thousand per engineering cost to redesign the bridge port. And Ozark, we have preliminary drawings, we just need, so we're going to pay out, so then cost county to have Alex do, will pay out some of those grants. To do the, you know, he's got to go out and survey those accesses and finally is growing. After looking at some of our preliminary drawings, they're going to have to do some changes anyway, because there's sandbars right where they were. So, um, I think hopefully Alex can figure that out. That money won't come in till, I believe, this fall, it has to go through their board, the DNR's board for final approval. It got approved by the, the grant committee, so that grants in. Um, we got the DNR to pay for, they're doing some more preliminaries now for us, they're going to do Royer Town. And then redesign Joinerville, so it lays at an angle into the stream, into the bank and do a parking lot for us. So those are the two they're working on, they, they're going to have an engineer, so that won't be any cost for our county, so those are the next two steps. They're going to do those, then we'll probably have to apply for another grant to finalize the drawings and grants to try to do the work, so. Um, there'll be some steps, it'll take some time, um. I guess, I know a lot of people have been wanting to see Bridgeport and they think it's going to happen tomorrow, it might not happen for a few years, you know. Just finding that money.
That was a big help with just what you guys did.
Yeah, so hopefully, that's kind of a temporary fix, maybe the people like it and we'll just kind of lay off that design and. If we want to, I just know if you lay it on an angle.
I know one person that doesn't.
Doesn't like how we did it?
Yeah, doesn't really wants it updated and.
Yeah, yeah, is it a, start with a P?
No.
Oh, I get a call weekly from one, so. But, um, yeah, well, it'll have to get some money, that'll take some time on those. But, and all of our access ramps, fifty two axes, I see that the other ramp start this lane at. Sprayville Access has some washing going under there, so there's maintenance or replacement. And I actually called Daryl the other day, I was curious, because there wasn't anything in the folders, I'm like, how old are these ramps, he goes, well, they're there before him. So they have lasted a long, quite a few years, so hopefully, maybe we just want to stick with some of that. Just redo what the design that was already done, so.
So the dock, they want to put in that dam. On the north side, has that been started or is that planned in there? Seem like they're going to bring it out through all the.
There has been some preliminary engineering on that for the, what are you saying, for the portage to go around the dam. There's been some preliminary engineering design, it's going to cost a fortune, I think that one's going to be a long ways down the list. Before we go for grants for that. Say it would make more sense to go for the grants for like Bridgeport, you can't, Royer Town. If it's ten years, fifteen years down the road, that's where that one's going to probably land, I, it depends on. And if they get that one ten to one percent sales tax money, we're going to see a big flourish in the DNR's fundings for these programs. And then maybe something like that's more feasible, but. And then maybe something like that's more feasible, but right now I don't see how feasible it is and. Just from their preliminary drawings, I think, they said it wasn't going to be something that would last forever, because the flooding up there. So I don't know if we want to spend a lot of money on it.
Yeah.
So, for now.
Think there'd be some kind of rip wrap above, you know, that could diminish the water around the ramp somehow, some way.
Yeah, well, this is just a jetty more than a ramp, they wanted to do from the dam. Itself from the, would be the north side, I, across that.
Well, another, yeah, there's like, the dams in and then it's just silted in.
Yeah.
Become like a large almost.
Yeah.
What would it cost to actually go in there and dredge that out, so you could just roll your canoes right up to the dam and then go over?
Well, that's part of what they want to do, they want to kind of just mad out a excavator, make a levee. Eventually to have a place to paddle until that silt's in, they said lifespan of the ditch wouldn't be very long, because it'll silt so fast. And then they'd have the levee they could pull up on and walk and then. But they didn't know how long that would last, that, that was from engineering, um, from. Uh, so they did some floodplain history on that, I don't know, I'm, I'm not thinking that's a priority of us right now.
Probably not a viable solution.
Yeah, I don't know what the viable solution is, for now, we're going to put up signs, new signage, we got to meet the water trail standards. Um, that warning people of a dam, so we'll throw one on the upper in the Joinerville. As they're coming in, saying last access dam ahead, and then have some warning signs down river for people, so. Um, I think the liability actually falls on the state, it's a water trail, so. If we get those signs up, it's not on our county, so that's a lot better.
Buy more signs.
Yeah, yeah, so we got to get those signs, um, the state has certain ways, we have to post them and stuff, so I'm waiting on that. Um, but that's all part of the water trail, we just got the preliminary, preliminary plan, I don't know if you got that Larry in the email. From the water trail, just kind of put together. I'll have to see if I can forward it back over, I thought you were on that list, um, showing what we got. Um, it'll still, I don't think we'll be a water trail for the state until next year. Just the way it goes with their boards and stuff, so, but we are available for some of the money since we're in process, that's why we got that grant money. Um, to do those two, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I don't know if anything else.
Be a part of that when we're all said and done, yeah.
Yeah, we had quite a few people respond from the landowner survey, we're finding that. Trespassing and littering are the biggest problems along the Tri- River, which is pretty much what we expect.
Sure.
I don't know, it's hard one to figure out how you ever cut back on, you know.
Well, it's called responsibility, but you know what?
Yeah.
How do, how do you instill that?
Yeah, it's hard for law enforcement to ever patrol something where you can't, so.
Have a drone going back and forth.
Ask those tourism guys about the drone, if they had videos of some of the. And that stuck past me.
Oh, yeah, so I don't know, I don't know too much else new from our end. Um, more just keeping the campgrounds up more lately and.
Yeah, that's a lot of work right now, if you're full, time, that takes time.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah, so. Um, yeah, a little bit of grants, most of the grants are going to come open this fall more, summertime seems like a dead season for grant already. At least the ones that I know, so.
Certainly appreciate the update.
Yeah, so.
Anything new, you want to have a special meeting or anything, let us know.
Yeah, we'll probably look at something later in the summer for you guys to go do another tour.
That'd be great.
So, um, maybe we'll wait until it cools off a little bit.
We think you're out of time.
Yep, so.
Let us know.
All right, yeah, I, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything on awards and commissions? We didn't have many meet.
We had it all last week, so.
At least it gets back with us. Have a motion to a trial.
Shelley wants to submit a couple more claims for that.
Okay, we'll recess till Shelley comes over. Okay, we're joined by Shelley Hoye from the auditor's office and uh, we have some additional claims.
Yes, I have an addition of conservation claims, which she was not, we, we had a miscommunication. She thought that she could not bring me the claims until she had posted them, and I told her that. Don't post them until I let you know that it's okay to post, wow. So she didn't bring them in, um, but she had, for this week's claim period, she has two thousand three hundred and seventy four dollars and twenty two cents. Um, for Century Link, James, Alice and Sandra Kemter, who are campground attendants. And Republic Services for garbage services in Windstream. So that brings the total up to two thousand or two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars and sixty two cents.
So you need a motion to approve the claims as corrected, amended.
Well, that's what we're doing is amending the claims, yes.
So I would make the motion to amend the claims as you presented.
Second. And move in second, and that, was that two thousand three hundred and seventy four dollars and twenty two cents?
Yes, that's what I had, twenty three seventy four point twenty two, for a total of two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars and sixty two cents.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you, thank you. Did you need to have them sign?
Is there any other business to come before the meeting today?
I have none. We're making a motion to adjourn.
And seconded to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.